Special Town Meeting, Town of Acton, Warrant to Robert Anderson, Constable for the Town of Acton. Greetings. In the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby requested notify and warn the inhabitants of said Town of Acton qualified to vote in Town Affairs to assemble at the Acton Town Hall on March 19th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the evening to act on the following articles. We do have a notice of special town meeting from Mr. Anderson. I hereby swear and affirm that the attached special town meeting warrant scheduled for Thursday, March 19th was posted in a public place at the following locations on the following dates. Acton Town Hall, February 27th, Acton Post Office, March 2nd, Milton Mills Post Office, March 2nd, the Acton Transfer Station, March 2nd, Acton Trading Post, March 2nd, Acton Elementary School, March 2nd. Article 1, to choose a moderator for said meeting.
I nominate Richard Nass.
Richard Nass has been seconded in? Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll close nominations. And we need to vote on the moderator by written secret ballot, minimum of three people. Anybody want to vote? You gotta have three, because I don't think I've got three. Anyone else? Love the old home rules. Okay, Mr. Nass, you've been elected moderator. If you please come forward and take your oath. Just a minute. I, Richard Nass, do swear to support the Constitution of the United States-
Support the Constitution of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state-
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof-
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof-
I, Richard Nass-
I, Richard Nass-
Do swear-
Do swear-
That I will faithfully discharge-
Faithfully discharge-
To the best of my abilities-
My abilities-
The duties incumbent upon me-
The duties incumbent on me-
As moderator of this meeting-
As moderator of this meeting-
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Pretty good turnout, not bad. As usual, we'll conduct this meeting according to the Maine moderators' rules, which is a very simple set of rules to run a town meeting. Does anybody object to that? Seeing none, we'll run the meeting that way. In order to vote, everybody should have a red ticket. If you don't, you need to see the young lady in the back get checked in. Everybody that's planning to vote has a red ticket. Thank you. Since this meeting is being recorded, I think, not televised but recorded, if you have a question or want to make a comment, you need to come up here and do that. Okay? Anybody else got any questions about process or procedure? Okay, moving on to Article 2, to see if the town will vote to ratify the transfer of $68,613 from the Undesignated Fund for the fiscal year 2015 overdrafts in the following accounts. Account 10510, District 1, Road Maintenance, Winter Road Maintenance, excuse me. 10520, District 2, Winter Road Maintenance. 10530, Sand, Salt, Stockpile. Board of Selectmen recommend approve the article as written. Warrant and Finance Committee is not available, their recommendation not available at this time. Are there any, first of all, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the article as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Article 2 as written. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes.
How many yards of sand have we used so far this year?
Can anyone answer the question?
I'd say roughly 3,500 yards.
Let him get to the mic.
Oh.
If you want to, you can say that.
We can share, okay.
Yeah? We can share. I'd say roughly 3,500 yards.
Okay, where did we get it from? We had bids last fall-
Yep.
And I understand that where we accepted bid from Turk's Pit and they weren't able to deliver as they should.
This past winter, yes.
And so where else did we buy it? What did we pay?
We paid $1,150 per yard. We checked Frankie Carroll, Peppin &amp; Sons in Sanford, Peppin's in here in Acton, Dayton Sand to Gravel, and we got the best price we could with the best availability as quick as we needed it.
Yeah, because we were, they were unable to supply. We took the higher bid, I hope everybody understands, last fall. We paid 50 cents more per yard.
Wait a minute, let's not have a discussion. We didn't take the higher bid. Let's not have a discussion. There was much higher ones.
Okay, no more discussion. How many tons of salt have we used this year?
I would, this is just quick guessing here, I'd say 1,200 to 1,300 ton.
What's the total labor cost so far? And what's our cost per mile for our winter maintenance?
I mean, our winter maintenance has been roughly, it's been $7,000 a mile per year. That's what it's always been figuring out to be. That's with the, that's the yardage, trucks, the whole nine yards. And then it varies, depends on what type of year you have. If it's an icy year or a snowy year, like this year, we had a lot of ice in the beginning of the year, slippery roads, ice, ice, ice. We used a lot of material in the beginning, but then it turned off real cold. We had, you had to use any material until right at the end.
I understand. You've been to the anti-icing class-
Yes, I have.
As have I and Dave. And I passed out something to all of you. If you take a look at it and see our costs, this is killing us. I mean, your cost for sand is $135 a yard.
I went to that class, okay? I'm going to diffuse-
Is that a question or a statement?
No, that's a statement.
Statement, okay, then, do you want to, are you finished?
Oh, I'll calm it down.
Okay, no.
I'll come back for a couple more questions later.
You can continue to ask questions. Do you want to answer some of it?
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that, I guess, a couple of the questions on all. I did go to that class. I know exactly what you're talking about. The amount of material we're using, the sand is not what's costing us the large amount of money. We've only spent, you know, between with the 35,000 and 4,000 yards. The original cost was only 675 a yard delivered. The $1,150 a yard that we did purchase was an emergency. And the reason why the other company couldn't do it, because as everybody here remembers, it was the coldest February that we've had, and both the places in town, they had six feet of frost in their banks, they couldn't get them out. And we needed it now. They were gonna get, they were gonna deliver to us, but we needed the material within a three to four day period, and with the amount of frost they had, it was gonna take at least that to open up the banks. So Scott and I made a decision that we needed this material now. Now, the sand, at $1,150 a yard, we thought was still a bargain. And especially when we were able to call and have, I believe we had 500 yards delivered by 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And that saved us money on the other side of installation. The salt, the salt's what's cost us a lot of money. And if you look through your little packet there you got from the State of Maine class that we all took, we're not using any more salt than we originally used. It's still gonna cost us the same. And we've done whatever we can to limit our use of sand salt. We've had, we had, I think in a one week period there, I remember where we were only sanded a couple times, where we just left the roads. We didn't even try bearing them up because it was so cold, salt wasn't working. And it was, salt doesn't work, you know, effectively under 15 degrees, and you know that because you took that class.
Well, it depends on the weather.
Well, I'm not here to debate, I'm just telling you that we're using the resources we have, and the materials we're buying, the cost is not the sand. There is a cost in sand, but that's not what's hurting our budget, it's the salt. And we're only applying it when needed. And we're at the mercy of the salt companies at this point, so I can't tell you anymore. I mean, we're doing our job as effectively as we can with the resources we have.
Any other questions on Article 2? Yes, Cindy.
Recovery.
Try to, try to ask one question that they can answer, and then if you need, have more questions, don't, don't-
Okay, here you go. Last year, we, at this time, we dumped 3,486 yards of sand on these roads. At that point, the cost would be about $470,000, according to the DOT. I'd like to know, how many yards did we recover and where did we put it specifically? And also, what are we gonna do about all this stuff I wrote?
We don't, the sand that we recover, we don't reuse our sand. The $135 per yard is a number that the State of Maine uses for their recovery, and their recovery's a lot more than our recovery. We can't base our numbers off how the state runs their, their business, only to a certain We, we've discussed, Scott and I have discussed the salt priority, but honestly, to do so, we also put the sand down so we can make these hills and corners a lot of the time. So for me, going up Milton Mills Road, up Farnham's Hill with straight salt, which salt gives no traction, there's no traction factor to salt, we'd have a heck of a hard time between that hill, Blueberry Hill, all the way from Hurlem, all the way up through. So I, I'm gonna say right now that Scott and I, I think our roads are some of the best roads in the area. And, you know, you could take your numbers, you gotta remember, you're talking, you're taking numbers from the state where they got full-time crews, they go around, they work so many hours, have so many coffee breaks, they buy all these trucks and stuff, that's all incorporated with that, okay? You know, we ditch, with a limited budget we have, we ditch what we need to do. As a matter of fact, you take the San Pedro, for instance, I, I use pretty primarily straight salt in that road. Because of, I don't want to fill my ditch lines in, but that's a flat road. It's a road where you don't have a lot of high traffic, fast traffic, so we don't have the sand buildup, that's why I'm doing that. But there's other roads I can't do that on because we have the hills, the large corners, large, large hills and corners. And, and we've, we've gone to as much salt as we can, but it, I mean, I don't, I don't understand where we're going with this. This is more of a road committee discussion than whether or not we're doing our job or we're not spending our money in the right place. We're doing what we can with what we have.
Scott, do you have?
Yes, I'd like to add. And I'm not ditching the state, how they do their job and how they work, but David, I've taken care of 109 many of, many of times during these treacherous storms when the state is somewhere. We're out sanding them for the fire department, safety people, and for you people's safety. All right, and I'm not ditching the state again, this is a ditching joke now, because when Dave and I are out there ditching, we're out there working, we're ditching, our trucks are moving back and forth. We don't have three or four guys standing around and 10 trucks out there sitting there waiting to get loaded. We bring what we need, get the job done efficiently and fast and accordingly to what we see, how we'd want our job done, spending our own money. Not having the state come up here with 10 trucks, a grader, and one little backhoe trying to load trucks, you know, we, so I think we spend our money, winter-wise and summer-wise, effectively fixing our roads, taking care of our roads maintenance with the budget we got the best we can. And I agree with the sand, I don't see we ever getting rid of the use of sand. We are trying to go to more salt priority, but it depends on Mother Nature, too. I mean, it's, it's, every year it changes.
Anybody from the Warrant and Finance Committee want to offer an opinion? I understand they've met on this, even though there was nothing printed on the warrant. Does anybody here care to offer an opinion or a recommendation? Tom, you ready to go?
No, I'm not here to offer a recommendation. What I, I was asked earlier, excuse me, I was asked a couple days ago, I would speak at this meeting for the Warrant and Finance Committee meeting for the board, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to read you the minutes. They're unofficial, they have been sent to every member of the Warrant and Finance Committee, and I haven't gotten any comments back. So I understand right now that this is a consensus of the Warrant and Finance Committee. First item of business before the committee was the posting of a warrant by the Selectmen for a special town meeting on March 19th at 7:00 PM. The chairman noted that WNF had, had not received the copy of the warrant before posting, and the Selectmen had not approached him with a request for the committee to consider the warrant. Mr. Gore asked if the chair, Mr. Gore asked the chair if he believed that the Warrant and Finance Committee ordinance requires that the Warrant and Finance Committee review all proposed warrant articles and to make a recommendation. The chairman stated that he so understood. After some discussion, how to proceed, and noting that no representative from the Board of Selectmen was present, Mr. Gore made a motion to table any consideration of the warrant unless or until we can be provided with the information necessary to give, quote, "due consideration and study," as required by the ordinance. The motion was seconded by Nancy Roma. The motion carried. After that discussion, or after the above referenced vote, Mr. Cashin asked if there was a way to correct the above referenced oversight. In general discussion, it was noted the Board of Selectmen, that if the Board of Selectmen were to provide the documentation of the need for the meeting and to appear at a meeting of the Warrant and Finance to respond to questions, the committee could then proceed. And I offer no additional comments.
Are there any additional questions or comments on Article 2?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think my question was answered about where we put this product when we get it off the road. We're pouring 3,500 yards, how much are we recovering and where are we putting it specifically?
There's so many questions, I guess I missed that one. When we recover the material, I don't know, I don't know what Scott's numbers are, but I figure my estimated number, we're hauling at least 2,000 to 3,000 yards of material off the side of the road a year, okay? Most of the material that we haul off, we try to haul down to our town shed if it's a gravelly material that we can use for reclaiming, making gravel. And the other material gets hauled off to designated sites in town there that we, you know, people there that are making a bigger backyard. But the material we're hauling off, you're talking leaves, branches, it's sand, gravel runoff from the roads itself washing out and stuff. So typically, that's what we do, we try to utilize what we can if it's a good enough material to reprocess, I mean, turn into gravel, mix it into our asphalt pile, that's what we try to do. But that's what I'm figuring right now, that we, we're roughly, I got all the numbers on my payrolls every, every, every week that we ditch or whatever, all my yardage is documented on there and where it goes, so, but if you figure, you do the, do the figuring, it's about 2,000 to 3,000 yards a year that I'm averaging hauling off the side of the road. And whether or not we go to straight salt, whether or not that's gonna stop, we're still gonna have ditching to do. There's still gonna be, you know, the side of the road washing out and this and that, so hopefully that answers your question.
Additional questions or comments on Article 2? Paul first, and then Barbara.
Paul Pointe, two things. One is, it seems to me that, or I express a hope that the apparent bad communication between the Board of Selectmen and the Warrant and Finance Committee will in due course resolve itself. Because something that happens in a, in a two article warrant is something you can shrug off, but if it's a more substantial warrant, not so much. Secondly, there are three departments here and one number. What is the percentage allocation of each of those numbers, or that one number into these three departments? You know, was it roughly a third on each, or was one of the departments more needy than the other two?
So can anyone answer the question? The designation or the percentage split of the 68,613 into three articles, can anyone answer the question?
I can answer the question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The difference between District 1 and 2, they're about the same. Roughly, you're looking at 33% all the way around at this point today. The bills that are due tomorrow for salt and, and sand will put the sand and salt balance significantly, significantly more, which would be about 50% on sand and salt overage and 25 each. They're within, right now, they're within about $100 of each other, so.
Other questions on Article 2? Cindy, let's, let, hang on, actually, I promised Barbara.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Barbara, you're up.
I have a question on whether or not the town has applied for FEMA. And if so, how do you arrive at the figure without knowing what FEMA's gonna give back?
We have applied for FEMA, it's just in the initial application right now. We have our kickoff meeting on the 31st. We're looking at getting roughly 16,000, 17,000 was our cost for the 48-hour period, which is, that's all they're allowing, is that 48 hours, even though cleanup efforts certainly went a lot longer than that. We have already put forward $6,446 of money that was received from Storm Nemo, which we have voted at town meeting to put the money aside and use for these declared events. That money typically does not come back in the same year, so to, to use it this year, we couldn't. So that will, when it comes in, I'm gonna guess that we probably won't see the money until fall, at least a portion of the money until fall, that will go back into the FEMA reserve for the next declared event.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions or comments on?
I got one, yeah. I just want to let the Town of Acton know that, you know, these, it's been a pretty tough one for everybody, you know, plowing driveways, plowing roads, every town has been having this problem. Scott and I, we've been communicating quite a bit, trying to cut down on man time. You know, we, we'll call up each other, you know, when you go on out, we're gonna, you know, we'll pull the guys in at 9, 10 o'clock, all depending on the storm, trying to cut man time. And, because the man hours and the truck times, you know, it's quite expensive. And I think we've done a pretty good job of that. What we, basically what we try doing if the storm isn't, you know, isn't the blizzard, the blizzard you stay out on, you don't want to be hind on, but if you have a storm where, you know, you're gonna get a couple inches overnight, you know, after it snowed all day, you know, we'll pull the guys in until, you know, from 10 to 2 o'clock in the morning, as long as it's not a real traffic hazard. By doing that, we've, we've actually saved some money. It doesn't look it, but we've done that all went along. A month of February, we've, we've pulled the guys in and hope that, you know, nothing happened in the middle of the night, just to save time. So I just wanted the Town of Acton to know that, you know, we've taken every course of action to try to save as much as we can, and that's it.
Additional questions? Cindy, on Article 2 still. A motion on Article 2 is to adopt the article as written. Go ahead.
Just one more thing. What plans do you have to remove the sand from the roads? It's gonna be slippery very fast at the intersections, and what plans do you have to remove it? Will it be before school lets out so that it's safe? We don't have any places for kids to go when they're on a bike out there, and this sand is just like ice when it gets to this point.
I think Dave and I are pretty diligently, diligently, when as soon as the snow is gone, we are hitting, are definitely hitting our intersections first. You know, our high traveled roads like H Road that people go, supposed to be doing 35 or doing 60, help me out, because they blow it all off and it's gone. So, you know, so we definitely hit our intersections first right off the bat, and all our safety, you know, our corners, we always hit the, you know, we go for the safety, the first of safety, even if we do a little bouncing, we'll go to our corners, intersections, that was, sorry, that was me. And then we'll, you know, then some of, like Lakewood Drive, that'd be like one of my last ones I hit, because it's not a very traveled road. Sweep it up in piles. West Shore Drive, that's another one, I'll go, I'll do a section, I'll sweep it up in piles, because I've been diligently trying to put drainage catch basins in, so, so it's not washing into the lake, so we've been, you know, so it goes on, safety first, how we clean up, and we usually get right on it. Because there's posted roads, we can't go out and run our big trucks and do big jobs right now, so we like going out and going as fast as we can to make a buck, too. You know, that's what we're in this business for.
We typically, usually by the second week in April, normally we're out cleaning them up. Now and then you get caught, though. You start cleaning them up a little too early, and before you know it, we have a snowstorm. We found them on April 1st, well, we found them after that, but, so typically, we'll try to get them cleaned up usually after that, but we, we always have them done before school lets out, they're usually done usually by the middle of April.
Additional comments or questions? Holly.
Hi.
Article 2.
Yes, Holly Mooney, I'm here just honestly as a taxpayer, and I'm Scott's wife. So I just wanted to just say real quick that this is a ton of money, and I get it, and I think that the questions are great. It's our second biggest budget in our town, so they should be questioned, everybody should be held accountable. But I just want to kind of piggyback on what Dave said. As Scott's wife, I've seen him in the last 12 years be doing this, and there is a lot of thought that comes into it, and it's a lot of money, and it kind of stinks that it went over, and whenever his, their budgets start going over, they start getting really nervous, I know that. I see it from Scott. But what Dave was saying about like bringing the crew in and then debating on when to put the crew out, he's always trying to do that, he's always trying to make sure he's out before the bus run, and they do. If they can bring the crew in for four or five hours so the guys can sleep, save the town money, and then go back out to get the bus run done, they'll do it, and they do it a lot. So I just, I want to kind of just say that that, it's true. I mean, it's a ton of money, I understand that, and then to add this amount onto it, it stinks, but they really do care about their roads, and I, I travel going to work, I travel on different roads around us, and I'm always surprised, and I'll call Scott and say, hey, you know, this, your roads look good, because his, his roads butt others, so. It's not just them, though, it's their crew. Their crew does a really good job, and they should get, you know, some credit for that. So thank you.
Scott, comments or questions?
Paul.
Paul?
Yeah, one more shot.
Just to add a little perspective here, I grabbed the annual report to look at the budgets. For Article 2, this represents, of these three departments, it, this represents a 25% increase in the three, the total of the three budgets that we, departments we see in front of us here. I mean, typically in a winter, I'll go through, I gauge it by how many fuel, fuel tanks of diesel I have to use to clear the snow out of my driveway. Typically, it's like one or two for a winter, and I've already filled the thing four times this winter. So, you know, this has been a significant winter, and frankly, to have it be only 25% over budget for these three departments is semi miraculous, in my opinion.
Additional comments or questions? Scott?
And this money that, if you do delegate it to us, it's not for freefall, it's for maybe a little bit more salt, a little more sand, and absolutely just to keep the roads plowed. It's not like we're gonna go out there and buy a big stockpile or not, so any money, it's just to have money in the budget so we're not going over. It's nothing, it's not like we're gonna be right back out there 24/7 if we get an inch. You know, we're still gonna be watching this money like we're, you know, we're asking for something that we graciously, we hopefully we're gonna get. So, you know, yes, we're gonna get a little bit more salt and a little bit more sand just to make, just so we have in case something happens, and only go out when it's absolutely necessary, so the money will go back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Additional comments or questions on Article 2? Seeing none, the motion on Article 2 is to adopt the motion as read or as written, I think, is the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Thank you. Cards down, those opposed. Article 2 is passed as written. Article 3, see if the town will vote to appropriate from undesigned, from the Undesignated Fund- a sum not to exceed $90,000 for the continued winter road maintenance for fiscal year 2015. Board of Selectmen recommend approve the article as written. Warrant and Finance Committee not available at the time of posting. Is there a motion on Article Three?
I make a motion to approve the article as written.
It's been moved in second and on Article Three to approve the article as written. Are there questions or comments on Article Three? Okay, yes. Come on, yeah, come on up here. The folks at home are gonna wanna see you, instead of just being a voice. Come on, get, get right over here.
Hi, my name is Susan. Um, in Article Three, it's a question, is this just for the maintenance and don't you already budget maintenance in every year?
David?
I think I can answer this. This, this line item is for winter maintenance, okay? So, you've got, you're plowing and sanding for both districts, and then you have stockpile. And those are the only ones, we have summertime maintenance money that's set aside for the summertime stuff, so we're voting on the wintertime maintenance time. If that answers your question.
Well, did, so, every year, one July, you make up a budget.
I know.
Every year you make up a budget in July. So, you make up your budget for the maintenance, correct?
We make up a budget for the summertime, which we get, uh, 80, 80, 80, 84, $84,000 apiece for our summertime maintenance, that's for your ditching, your sanding, uh, then we can also get approved another $90,000 for our paving, okay? And then, on a separate article, we voted for wintertime maintenance, our plowing and sanding, with 76,000 and change, okay? That's for each district, we have 76,000 for each district for the plowing and sanding, and then we have the, um, additional for the salt and sand, okay?
So, maintenance hasn't started yet, right?
No, 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 when we say maintenance, it's, the maintenance is the plowing and sanding, maintenance, winter maintenance, then you have summer maintenance. So, um, seeing we're coming into the later part of the year, um, Scott and I leave so much for the sweeping of the roads, this and that, this doesn't affect anything to do with that, this is just for the-
So, is this a part of the sweeping?
No.
The 90,000?
No, this $90,000, um, is to cover expenditures that have been spent, or if, say, we do have some snow in April, which we have had, we're hoping not, but we have to have some money there in case there is. So, this money that's being, we're, we're talking about voting on, may not ever get spent, not being pulled out of the general surplus and put into our accounts, it's just there if we need it. So, um, that money, we do have something coming on Saturday, a dust, or something, we don't know, but, um, from there on, we never know, we might not even touch that money, but this is just an assurance that in case there is, we can go to work and bills will get paid.
And then what happens to the money if you-
It stays in the, stays in the general surplus. We don't, we don't give that money at all, and, unless we-
Okay, we're having a conversation here, if we don't, Ted, do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, what you're doing is you're allowing the Selectmen and the Treasurer, should we have another storm, to be able to spend up to $90,000. Um, we're doing that because we already owe some money, um, that's above and beyond what we're allowed to go over, uh, from the previous storms and salt and sand bills that are just coming in. So, we will need to take money out of that account. We're allowed to go 15% over budget, and then we use the FEMA money that we already had, and we've spent all of that. And, um, so now we're asking to pay the rest of the bills that we have for this winter and to give us the, the, um, ability to, um, pay for any additional storm should we get any more. If we don't use the money, it stays right in the undesignated fund, and it can't be spent for anything else, it can't be used for next year or anything else. That's just to get us through this season. Okay? Um, the other thing I'd like to add, uh, something that was brought up earlier, if it's okay.
Sure.
Um, the Warrant and Finance and Paul, your comment and everything. Um, what happened was we got hit with a storm, um, and got some really unexpected expenses. It was what, $30,000 that week? Um, we thought we had enough that we'd go a little longer, and then all of a sudden we got bills for $30,000 in one week. So, we had to go quickly with this, and, uh, we, uh, the Selectmen signed, um, this on, let's see, on March 19th, uh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Uh, on 2/27, the Selectmen signed, and we sent an email to Mr. Neal, who's the Chairman of the Warrant and Finance, "Attached, please find a copy of the special town meeting warrant that the Selectmen signed last night. As you will see, it's scheduled for March 19th, although we couldn't print your committee's recommendations on the warrant. If you have the time to discuss it at your next meeting on Monday, May 9th, they could be shared verbally with the residents on the 19th." So, it was an emergency, yes, we could've gone a few more days before we posted it, but we wanted to get out the information as quickly as possible because we were already over what we were allowed to spend, and we knew these bills were coming in. So, we apologize to Warrant and Finance Committee, but we thought we were doing the right thing by getting out as quickly as we could, and you did have the opportunity to vote on those articles at that night, but you had not requested the, uh, Road Commission, uh, Road Committee to come and answer questions, and we apologize.
Other comments or questions? Tom, Tom Gore.
The only concern I would have here, I pointed out-
Come on, this is, Tom, this is the part of the controversy tonight, you gotta be up here, okay?
Okay, all right. Primarily what concerns me about this is it's out of order. The ordinance requires that the warrant be issued with a, a, um, recommendation. The, the, the Warrant and Finance ordinance requires it, okay? What you've done is you've compromised the integrity of the vote. That potential exists, that's all.
Other comments or questions on Article Three?
Uh, two things, uh, one, hopefully a cap to the Warrant and Finance discussion. Um, there is precedent for posting of the warrant without Warrant and Finance, but actually having this meeting without at least a verbal official vote from Warrant and Finance, this is the first I've seen, so it's just a little strange. Um, secondly, um, for this $90,000, now, last year we had a warrant article very similar, I think it was closer to maybe $60,000, and if my incredibly flawed memory is working, was like $16,000 that we used last year of that amount that was voted in, something like that?
Yes.
So, I mean, basically, this $90,000 is, okay, we don't wanna have another meeting to, you know, to continue to, to budget overdrafts. So, this 90 is, is kinda shooting for the moon and hoping that we'll, you know, be something significantly less than that. It certainly seems that this weather pattern is broken, so in all likelihood, we're not gonna be spending much of this, but who knows? Thank you.
Additional comments or questions on Article Three? Seeing none, the motion on Article Three is to adopt the motion as written. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your red cards. Thank you, cards down, those opposed. Article Three is passed as written. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
It's a second?
Second.
The move in second that we adjourned, all those in favor. At least one red card up, thank you, for adjourned.